Thanks, everybody, for coming to our meeting tonight. We, is there any agenda additions or deletions? Here, George.
Yeah, I can say it.
Okay.
There is an access permit submitted this morning and capable of the site today. So, I don't know if you want to add it to this agenda or wait till the next one.
You need a motion on that?
Well, the question is, has it been looked at and do we have a report from the road commissioner?
He did look at it and he let me know that what culvert was required.
Okay, so we have the information.
I, I move that we add it to the agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, was you what?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you.
I'm fine, okay.
Um, approval of the meeting minutes of June 12th.
Move that we approve minutes as presented. Do we have them here?
I include them in Mike's packet, there's one copy.
Oh, okay.
If you want to look at them.
Because I've signed it already, so.
Yeah, so, um, all right, that motion was made by-
I'll second it then technically.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay. Uh, Highway Road Commissioner, um, he isn't here. Do you-
I, I don't have anything to report, you didn't leave anything for me to say specifically, but I can talk to the winter sand pricing quickly. Um, he got a quote from Pike, um, which is before you.
Yeah.
Eight dollars and thirty cents a ton for twenty-five hundred tons. But I believe since you guys approved the commodity pricing spreadsheet, which he had permission to not exceed up to twelve dollars a ton, he should be good to go to use this vendor. So, it's like an FYI.
Did we get other bids besides Pike?
Um, I think he reached out to another one, um, but I don't think he received a quote. And they tend to like to use Pike's product, so.
Now, is it the board's pleasure to wait till, uh, next meeting? See if we get any more bids?
Is there time sensitive on this?
I don't, I don't think so, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I took it that it's more of a, more of an FYI, not that we needed to approve.
I think it is because you approved the commodity pricing earlier this year.
All right. Anybody want to look at this here?
We got it.
We got it.
All right. And approval of, uh, select board warrants, they're right here.
I've already signed, so I've been in-
Yeah, I have to, so, just goes that way.
Did you want to do the access permit under Highway?
Yeah.
I'll, since we've already gotten the explanation, I'll make the motion that we approve the permit with the road commissioners recommended culvert.
Um, and the location of it, just so you know, um, is about a hundred and seventy-five feet onto East Timoth road off of Walker Mountain Road.
Great.
There's a field there.
Yep.
On the east side.
All right, there's motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing on all, in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? And, uh, Rob, if you want to add, looks like the select board chair has to sign it.
I'm fine with that as being added.
That's fine.
You're good with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, yeah, everybody's good with it.
Yep, that's fine.
All right. Rick?
Yes, sir.
As a guest, you're next.
Okay, uh, well, my biggest problem that I want to bring up is, um, speed. Not just this road. Every road that I've been on in this town is like, you're taking your life in your hands. I know the sheriff's department, I saw the report from last year, they did a pretty good job, they wrote a lot of tickets. Uh, not, they're not separated on that report as to, I think it was a hundred and, well, like a hundred and sixty tickets written last year, something like that. Yeah, but, um, it didn't split it up as to whether they were governing highway safety programs, which they are required to pull over so many people. Tickets aren't mandatory to be written, okay? But to see the hundred and sixty I haven't done, that's, that's pretty good. But I don't know how much actually would have come back to the town if they rewrote them, wrote them on the town roads. Um, between six and nine on this road right here, morning, and six and nine at night, I can't sleep, they wake me up going too fast. And not even with school out. And there's, um, a black car with a paper thing in his window, okay? And he goes by the place probably sixty miles an hour. And I just saw a truck go by before I came out here, it was probably around fifty. Um, so, it's everywhere. We got passed three times on Creek Road last night, coming home from, um, I'm not allowed to drive, so I wasn't driving, but coming home, we got passed three times on that road. So, my proposal to the board is to make it a, change our, our traffic stuff again and make it a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit townwide. Um, granted, um, it's not going to slow them down much, but it would maybe get the sheriff's department to, I know they're busy, I, I know a lot of DUIs out here, I guess. But at least some of their patrol be, um, dedicated to traffic control. Now, there's other times when they're not out because they just don't always have somebody out at night. Um, so that, that's really my biggest, biggest issue. This is the bicycle, people walking type of thing, season, if you will. Fortunately, I see a lot of people that are wearing vests and they are being visible. And the bikes, so far, they've been pretty good. I haven't seen a lot of bikes, but we're going to start building up ones that I think is better. So, um, I would just like to see about, um, eliminate the forty mile per hour speed limit. This is ridiculous to have this one at thirty-five and then you get destructive of mileage though at forty. We changed the one here, that was changed, that was forty coming down off the hill to thirty-five. It, it doesn't slow them down, but it's there. And just do them all thirty-five. Keep the twenty-fives, I think those are important where they are, they always have been. Um, but I think a forty mile per hour speed limit could possibly help a little bit.
When you were constable, I, I see this envelope, you have a lot of stuff in here.
Yeah.
In the past, when we changed this, maybe Bob, you can answer this as well. Um, when we changed mileage.
Right.
Is there a procedure that the town would have to go through, in other words, a study?
I don't know, because I've been out a little while, but I think you'd have to do a study, but I believe you could use the studies that are already there, I don't know if you would know or not.
I don't know what the timeframe is on these studies. I would say you probably would have to do a speed study. Um, they have changed that a little bit and, um, some of the requirements used to be an in-person study. I know they have been accepting, um, especially on some of the more rural roads without quite as much traffic, they've been accepting some from like the speed cards with the data flag in so many locations throughout.
Yep.
The issue with that is this time of year, that's in high demand, so getting that for
Yeah.
three weeks at a time or whatever, for three or four locations can be a bit difficult.
Can you give some information for us before we go any further with this conversation, Rick? Can you get some information for us and, um, probably more fact-finding kind of information and get it to Katie and then she'll get that to the board and then we'll have a little discussion afterwards.
And are you looking like sample ordinances along with that or, because I do know, we do have a couple of towns having ordinances along that where it's all roads in the town shall be this speed with the exception of, and they just list those couple of exceptions?
Well, if we could send-
Rather than listing out every-
My, my suggestion would be if you can send anything like that so that we could have something to work with. Any members have any other thing to say on that?
Well, we, uh, we had that thing set up with B-Remember.
Yeah.
Where I got, I got out and we were baffled at what we had on that data. And, um, it was just amazing how many cars actually use in this road now. And we had the one, what was it, about a hundred miles an hour, that one car?
Well, there was one, when we had that set up down by the school.
Yeah.
There was, uh, three or four that were sixteen, five-
Thirty and eleven, they were running between sixty-five and eighty-five.
Yeah.
Two cars.
Where?
Right by the high school.
Middle Road, by the high school.
River Lumber.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can tell after we got that report, I sat there multiple nights and I don't know if they were just doing it because the car is there.
That could be too.
Specifically targeted that after we got that report and I've been encounter, you know, both vehicles during that timeframe once we moved the car.
Looks like based on our current ordinance, we only have two roads at forty.
Yeah.
Three roads.
Alphetia, this road here, wants to go that way.
You know, part of Walker Mountain.
Yeah.
What's-
Seven B is forty-five.
What's East Timoth?
I think the Creek Road there from-
Creek Road, yeah.
Yeah, so there's those, those three that I know of.
Alphetia Creek Road in the middle.
Yeah.
All the rest of thirty-five?
All the rest of thirty-five.
We had this discussion back when I was on the board and Cash says, well, I use that or enforce it, well, set the sheriff's in town.
What's involved with doing a speed study? I mean, what are the, uh-
Well, when I did it, and that's a nineteen ninety-two.
Yep.
I did it with Sharon Underwood and we sat in a car with a radar detector and went through every road. And we took a, there's a certain number we had to take, it might have been ten or twelve or something like that. And we would record the, the speed and, uh, based on that, um, they actually had this little piece here at forty-five when we first started. So, uh, but it's, uh, it's pretty much done that way, but it's a little easier if we can get a hold of that cart and, um, put them, but, uh, put them around.
But if we're going to jump through this hoop, I think if we can get the, um, official designations, what we have to do, what we have, because otherwise, somebody will get a ticket and then raise all kinds of hell, but she didn't study it and all this, you know, today's world.
Well, again, the roads right now are good, as long as the stop signs are up and then the ones are in the proper spaces and all. And none of these speed signs are painted over like they sometimes get.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. They're pretty good right now, just, maybe you could just change the ones that are at forty and might make it easier, uh, because we already have that other stuff in place. But, uh, I would, you know, I would not like to go as far as getting a petition signed and have it voted on. I think you guys can handle that, um, one way or the other. If you're not in favor of it, then I might do that, just to see how the town would say.
Hmm.
Um, again, it may not slow them down, but there used to be an, an old saying when, when I was back and actually did some patrol, um, that, uh, if you drop it five, say, uh, uh, down to a thirty-five, then you'll get cars that'll go from forty-five to forty. That was an old saying, uh, way back. Um, so, not a whole lot of difference, but at the same time-
Well, we did change the speed over on East Clarendon, uh, up by the bridge and stuff, but we had to jump through a couple hoops there.
Mm-hmm.
Before we did that, so.
But it is, um, you know, we've got kids right here.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is thirty-five. And, um, and that black car comes, um, through in the morning and he'll come back through later on at night, same speed. And yesterday, I went down to do a little fishing, I have to walk at the camp, drive, um, and I heard the motorcycle, there's a red motorcycle up here again. And he, uh, went the triangle all the way around from here to Alphetia, Creek Road and back. And I know it's seven miles because I rode a bike down it once and measured it. And, uh, he did that loop in probably six minutes or less. When he went by me, or to the bridge, I thought he was going to blow, blow gas get out of his motor, I was kind of hoping it would, just to slow him down, not that I want anybody to get hurt, but, you know, he, he's going crazy. And he goes fast, very fast. I could hear him all the way around. So, it's, it's getting dangerous, very dangerous.
I did have a resident complain about speeding on bumper as well and brought that to Sergeant Cross's attention, but I thought I would mention it here as well.
School time, it was, it was, uh, every day. And, uh, that's kind of slowed down now a little bit, but, uh, for a handful, but even with that, it needs to be, uh-
At one point, we even considered putting a school zone.
Yeah, we, yeah, and that kind of sort of didn't work out. I forget why, how, why that didn't come around. Oh, the school didn't want it there and, uh, we were trying to get them to split the difference with us.
Right, and, and that's why we had put, uh, uh, speed sign, uh, speed-
But then you'd have to actually change the ordinance on that to do that.
Yeah, because, and that's why, um, when the school wasn't standing with us on that. Not that we really put any pressure or anything, but, um, I don't know, you guys could speak to, Bob, you were on the board at that point and school board really didn't want to get involved with it.
It kind of, kind of died.
They didn't want it.
Yeah.
They didn't want it.
But I would say, like you say, Sergeant Cross can give us some information and, I mean, we're talking, like we say, we're talking three roads and we can take a look at it and go from there.
Yeah.
It's going to take some time.
Yeah, Bob.
But you know, I would like to say, kind of agree with Rick, the, the speed is up terrifically in town, all over.
Yeah, everywhere.
My daughter lives on East Clarendon Road. Speed limit's thirty-five. And they go by there, they're doing forty-five, fifty, fifty-five, some even maybe a little faster. But what, I think what's happening with that particular road is not as much town residents as people passing through.
Yeah.
They live south of here and work in the city.
That's what's going on up at-
Cutting off on one oh-three to get out that way.
And I, I think a lot happens with the middle road too, to avoid the lights.
No problem.
When, uh, when they're running the trucks up here on Seven, I get a dozen trucks come down by my house to avoid them and go in both directions.
I've got a question for-
Oh, when they're weighing.
Yeah.
I have a question for Sergeant, uh, Cross. In your experience, is this typical what's happening with our town?
Um, I was actually just gonna, um, historically, it, I would say no. In the last three years, it is a statewide issue. Um, I think the biggest thing, and we're seeing it everywhere, when COVID hit, everyone stayed home, the traffic on the road was a quarter or less of what it usually was. People didn't have to pay attention, they were able to drive a little bit quicker.
Yep.
Majority of law enforcement agencies were told to avoid unnecessary interactions such as car stops. People picked up their speed, they weren't getting stopped, they weren't getting tickets.
Yep.
Um, we went back to that faster than most in the state or the country. I think we only kind of backed off for about two months and then we were back at it.
Yep.
With some limitations, um, for safety, obviously. But nation, state and nationwide, it used to be maybe like once a month, you'd get somebody at like thirty, thirty-five over the speed limit and it's a weekly, if not sometimes a daily thing now. Even though the traffic and everything is coming back and, you know, everything is returning more to normal, the driving habits have not returned to normal. They are still driving quickly, they're driving recklessly, it's just become a significant issue. Um, and along with that, you know, even in the state, since Memorial Day, we've had seven fatalities in the state on the highways.
Yeah, I was seeing that in the news.
And, and speed, you know, speed and distraction tend to be a factor in a majority of those, so, cell phones and just people not paying attention and driving too fast.
How many cellphone incidences are you aware of or whatever?
As far as stops or-
Problems?
Um, accidents, I can't speak, I haven't seen that data yet. Um, the data tends to lag a couple of months behind, um, we get that through AOT.
Yep.
Um, so I haven't seen the data on all of those yet as far as the distractions with the cell phones and things, but it should be coming in the next month or two.
And what's, what's, uh, what's the best cure if there is one, other than reducing the speed? I mean, you could make everybody twenty-five miles an hour and there's some that aren't, are not going to do it.
No.
You're, you're absolutely, and, you know, I, I don't have the solution. Um, you know, historically, I've been one, you know, at thirty miles an hour, you know, we have several criminal charges we can drop on people and historically, I'm one that I'm like, no, you know, it's a twenty-year-old kid, we don't want to screw up their life by doing that. You know, they'll probably learn more from a ticket than they would from criminal charges, but they don't seem to be learning from that in some and, you know, even with the criminal charges with the way the courts are backed up, you know, some of those, I guess I can say I'm not always totally pleased with the outcome of some, some of those cases, um, which is not my call to make, but, you know, they're doing the best they can with what they have. You know, so I, I don't really know what the solution is. Um, I can say recently, unfortunately, we have not had the, the presence in the motor vehicle work we normally try to. Um, Deputy Schneider has had several very significant investigative cases over the last month, month and a half, um, between vehicles and houses, she's done three search warrants. Um, she's just wrapped, finishing up a, uh, in-depth and significant first degree aggravated domestic, there's another portion of that, which may have additional felony charges that they're working with, uh, the state's attorney and the AG's office on. Um, she's got a couple of frauds that she's been working on that are, you know, twenty-thousand-dollar plus frauds.
Wow.
You know, so she's had a lot of very in-depth investigations that have been taking a lot of her time just following up on and doing solid cases and she hasn't been able to do the motor vehicle work. We're trying to backfill that where we can, but, uh, personnel is also still a bit of an issue for us.
I guess one of the things that I have observed, although I'm not the best person in terms of observing the speed sometimes, because I'm, I grew up, what's a car feel like, which is not a good way. But I've seen erratic behavior in my mind as just as much of a problem as speed.
Yes.
I mean, when you're driving and somebody's passing you in, uh, what should be a double line or a single line, but may not be there, I mean, there's some behavior that is very scary.
Nope, you're absolutely right, you know, and, you know, I, I, unfortunately, I, I don't have the answer for it. Um, you know, we try to do what we can and spread our presence around as much as possible, but, you know, it's the old ad, there's never a cop when you need one. You know, even if we get a couple, you know, it's word of mouth, but I guarantee for every one we get, there's five to ten that I wish we had.
Yep, yep.
If you can get us some information with regard to, uh, what procedures we would have to do to decrease townwide, um, and see, you know, how, how the state would say, well, you have to have, uh, scheduled hearings or whatever, you know, I don't know what that is, but-
Yep, I will, I will try to get all the information for the, uh, you know, for the ordinances and stuff, so you guys, I'm going to try and give you a couple of samples with those as well for some different methods.
Yep.
And, uh, I'll, uh, I'll also get Lieutenant Gino, but he's a little bit more up to speed on some of the, the regulatory part of that, so I'll get him involved in that as well.
Maybe he could set a few of the-
Wondered if we just asked a few folks here?
A few of those, um, four or five guys there and just-
We got three-
That would be fun.
Four people, whatever.
I've been trying for about six months to do one.
That's not a cure.
Yeah, the, the, while the public's here, do any of you have any comments about this conversation?
Well, I think it's a great idea. It's awful hard like, uh, now with the bridge closed, you know, we're on East Street and bump. And the traffic is crazy naturally going down bump. And I have seen the sheriff in one of the, uh,
Driveways.
Driveways there. But, yeah, they, you know, they're zooming down.
Yeah, no, I was up there the other day and coming down and a guy actually passed me, you know, right to the top of the hill on Bump Road.
Yeah.
The big white house is on the left. I was coming down because I wanted to go see, uh, what they were, what progress was going on with the bridge. I was coming down, I was about twenty miles an hour, you know, I used to live there, so I know. All of a sudden, this was a younger kid that had a black pickup, big pipes on the back.
Yeah.
Coming barrel ass and down there, passed me right on the top of a hill, I couldn't believe it.
And that's a bad hill.
Yeah.
That's a real bad hill. I'm surprised they haven't done any major actions there.
Um, that bridge will be closed for almost a year, so you never know what's going to happen here, but that's a good place to have somebody sit.
Well, bump is one of our top priorities.
Yep.
I've spoken with, you know, both the other deputies that work, generally work down here off, you know, when I can, so they both are well aware. I know Deputy Mills has spent some time over there. Hopefully, we can get Deputy Schneider out from under a couple of these cases and get her back out and, uh, get, get her back out a little bit more and get that presence felt as well.
Any, any other, from the public, have any comments?
Well, I mean, it's townwide, you know, where we live, we deal with the GE traffic coming from West Side.
Yeah.
You know, Creek Road, Alphetia Road, and stuff like that. But, you know, we watch more people pass other cars.
Yeah.
Over our house on that straightaway, between the spring and Alphetia Road, that stretch of straightaway and, you know, uh, passing those vehicles and it's, it's basically, in my mindset is, you've got to drive aware of this. You've got to take, you know, we walk and we're out there every day, we walk to, you know, into, into the village and back and, or down the Creek Road and you got to pick the alert and stay all the way and move all the way. And most people are generous, you know, move all the way, but the, the speed is up, we watch people pass all the time there and we're one of the forty mile hour stretches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're in a high-speed zone.
Right.
Come on.
And actually, if you park up next to where the fence ends and there's a little tree there.
Yep.
Good vision.
Thank you.
Flipped up.
Absolutely.
All right.
I do have something I would like to see you guys in the other room, it'll take about five minutes. But, uh, I just don't want to say it right here in the public right now, but I do have something to bring up.
Oh, there's a motion to go into executive session. Um, what is the-
What's the nature of it?
Yeah, this-
Employee.
Employee?
Yeah.
I don't know if legally we can because we didn't add it at the beginning of the meeting.
That's what I'm wondering.
That's the concern, we, we would have needed to add it and warn it at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, did, did you have the intention of doing this or did it come up now?
Um, because of my condition, sometimes I don't remember everything that, um, I wanted to bring up and when I stopped by to see Katie, I should have mentioned it then, but it didn't come up and then while I'm sitting here, decided to come up. So, I, I had an intention, but I didn't do it at the beginning.
Well, to Rob's point, you know-
Can we submit it in writing just to the board?
I can write it down.
Do it that way and then the board can deal with it as appropriate?
Maybe even at the next meeting, they'll schedule a-
If need be.
Yeah, if need be, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll write a note before I leave.
Well, we can.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing.
That's fine.
That would work.
That's, that's, that's fine.
Other than that, um, it's not fun.
All right.
Just hang around for a bit.
Any other comments on, uh, speeding? Okay.
Unless we could, well, the only thing, we should speed up the meeting a little bit.
All right, so under public comments, anybody want to comment what George has said?
I, they might boomer- They might boo me. That would be terrible.
All right, old business, M E R P grant.
Grant extension, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I could, before you move on.
Yeah.
I might have to go down here early. I'm not sure. Uh, Neighborhood Watch, we have not gotten the response we were hoping to get. It's coming along, but it's pretty slow. Now, I got an idea of printing up some flyers and putting them out, see if we can get people to attend. And it was mentioned to put them down at the transfer station. Would that be a problem with you fellows? And would it be a problem if we asked them to pass them out if they have the time?
I don't know about the passing out part. For me now, I'm just speaking for me. Uh, but if you want to post something here, I think that.
Or I would say if there is a volunteer that wants to stand and like, like the politicians do and hand them out, that's not a problem.
But I don't want to see.
I read that we printed them up and just left them in a pile on one of the tables there.
Just so long as it, we don't have the employees. And that's because that's biased then, in my opinion.
Yeah, we, we, having a paid employee distributing something that says that this is the opinion of the board or whatever, and that's, that's where you're getting into trouble.
But I don't see why there couldn't be a stack.
No, that should be fine.
Even next to recycling under the cover, you know, or something where people could snag them.
Yeah.
It's different. I mean, this is different than a political endorsement. Certainly, certainly different than that.
Right.
I'd agree.
Of course.
Hopefully for the good of all the town because.
As a leader down at the transfer station, what is your opinion on, not the posting, but the handouts?
Well, we're not saying hand them out. We're saying have a stack.
No, no, as suggested by Robbie.
Yeah. Uh, the, we could have a box there, you know, especially by the zero sort. Everybody.
Yeah.
Goes there and then have a sign there and.
They can snag them. Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Works for me.
Yeah, I'd like to see that moved a little more because I understand, uh, ninety-two ago, they hit the airport road and they got a bunch of windows down at the airport.
I heard that too.
Car windows or house windows?
Car windows.
Yeah.
Main box is, yeah.
All right, let's go today.
Yeah, we got a Rick.
I did remember one more thing.
Oh, jeez.
I got that old equipment from way back when it was, when we got the radar guns and stuff like that. Actually, I had them. They're all outdated, not anything that I believe can be repaired or worked, made, made in working order. Would you guys like to have them back or shall I take them down to, uh, transfer station?
I don't know.
Radio's not gonna be very good.
If it's lost to town, my opinion, just solely my opinion, then bring them down here to the town hall and we'll take a look at it.
Might be something the baseball guys or somebody might be interested in.
Yeah. Or certainly historic society.
Yeah.
Bob Underhill might.
But actually, the thing doesn't work anymore.
I can see that. All right, you done, Rick? Comment. All right, we'll try one more time. Get the grant execution.
So this is, I'm just following up from the last meeting. I got some clarification from RRPC on the language of the grant agreement. And I don't have to submit an invoice within thirty days. They're gonna send us money within thirty days of the signed agreement. And then it's not a reimbursement type grant, so they're gonna send us some money and we can use it when we need to. And it's just a fiscal reporting until we use it.
So we report on where it went after we get it?
Or if it wasn't used that fiscal year.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the board chairman to sign the execution of this grant.
Second.
There any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Um, new business fireworks permits.
So I received two for the Fourth of July. Um, there's Jeremy Bishop at six ninety-eight Knives Drive. He got it in before the deadline. I think he's had a permit, uh, for the past couple of years.
Yeah.
And then I had a Roger Soliski on Walker Mountain Road who got it in twelve days before the date of display. Um, also for the fourth, so I'm leaving it up to you guys.
That's not the Walker Mountain Road address we had issues with before, is it?
This is twenty-seven thirty-seven Walker Mountain. I sent them to Matt, asked if he had any issues with them, and he said, no. I hadn't seen this guy before.
Twenty-seven thirty-seven?
It's on the permit, but I believe that's the correct one.
Hmm, just looking to see which one it is because we had issues with one up there.
I did, um.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but I'm, that's in the vicinity of where we had problems before. Looking at the map.
Twenty-seven thirty-seven? Is that the top of the hill or is that down?
It's up where Firehouse Road and the hook.
Yeah.
Come together. Just before the cemetery.
Yeah, I recognize it.
Is that the, the address on there, Mike? Twenty-seven thirty-seven?
Yeah, Walker Mountain Road.
I mean, I don't know for sure. I don't have any way of knowing for sure. I know that we had issues up there. And I don't know if it's this one or if it's a different one. But.
I don't think it was.
There also, it all depends. I come from a world where if something's not in on time, it's automatically denied. So that's the board's decision on how you want to react to that.
Well, I tend to agree with you on terms of you have a deadline for a reason.
That's right.
Um, he was understanding that there was a deadline and I said I would leave it up to you if there was any lenience, but he understood.
I mean, it's just like when we deal with folks that miss the deadline on the, making a grievance for property value.
That's right.
You, you missed it. Sorry.
I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the one on Knipes Drive.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on Knipes Drive one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye and chair will sign it. Rob? Chair sign.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that. Chair, sign it.
Yep.
Okay.
And then I, you know my opinion. I'll leave it up to the rest of you to decide with that other one.
Well, I think my, my, my views are pretty well known.
Did the individual realize that he had a timestamp that he had to deal with?
I let him know that they're supposed to be in fifteen days in advance of the display and he was like, oh, shoot. Um, I said, you are within twelve days, so I'll leave it up to the board.
He was here when?
Um, I put on that sticky note when it was received. I can't remember.
How much did he miss it by or what?
Received, uh,
Six twenty-three.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
For the fourth to be the display.
And he needed fifteen days?
That's what you guys have set in place. Yes.
But that's, that's on our website.
Yes.
Correct? So.
Well, Mr. Chair, I move we deny the request based on the missing the deadline. Let's just do it that way.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. Uh, let's see. Transfer station maintenance needs Horst. Want to speak to us?
Hey. I was asked to list of, uh, some items that the transfer station could use. And, uh, one of them is, uh, we could use operating our signs at the gate. So people realize, you know, when the transfer station is supposed to be open. Uh, another one is a duplicate sign for the metal bend. No one's paying attention to the existing one. And I talked to Cash about that and I wish he was here, but, uh, to put another two signs to the other post where the gate is of the chain. That way, when they go, they have to see it. They have to see it.
What, what's being, uh, what are they putting in there that they shouldn't or whatever?
Well, they were putting in, uh, refrigerators. They've been putting in, uh, uh, air conditioners, uh, propane tanks. And then the town gets penalized.
Yes, yes.
So, and that's what the sign that is there now, uh, says, but nobody pays attention to anything. And when they come in, if we're busy doing somebody and somebody parks over there, we don't know if they're gonna throw something in. You know, that, we have no control over that, actually. You know, that should, I wish there was a, something we could come up, an idea of how to change to do it, you know?
Well, the only thing that you could do, but it takes more time and personnel is to, uh, they have to get approval before they throw something in, which is gonna, somebody's gonna have to be there to do it.
Yeah, right.
So, between a hard, a rock and a hard place.
Well, the, uh, excuse me, the, but I don't know how we could tell them to do that. Is to, just like, uh, the brush pile.
Yeah.
Down back. Talked to Cash about that too, to have a sign made that says stop. And then it says, uh, uh, stop for the attendant, uh, for the brush check-in.
Yep.
So they, and then the gate would be there with a sign there.
Yep.
It'd be more on us to go and have to look and open it up to let them in.
Yep.
But then we're gonna have to go and close them again when they come back up and, but it's happened already, you know, uh, about two weeks ago, a fella came and Harry and I were busy with people, you know, on a Saturday. You know how busy it gets. So all of a sudden, he came up not the ru, the one way.
Yeah.
Up the other way and shot and went down back. And, uh, Harry ran over to me and he says, oh, somebody just went down there. So I went and I looked and I said, whoa, what, you know, what you got in the back there? And he says, oh, no, you know, he mumbled off. I said, do you have brush? You know, because that's all that's supposed to be there. Anything that's four inches or smaller, we can take.
Yeah.
Well, then the guy says, uh, you know, I don't have to listen to that dumb, uh, you know, old man, you know? So I yelled at him, told him to get his butt up here and I went and talked with him. And, but, you know, then he bitch, uh, was talking about, uh, you know, I pay taxes and this and that. And I said, I'm just doing what the town and the state has authored us to do. We're not supposed to have that kind of stuff down there. And, you know, he says, I'm going down to talk to the town, you know, board or whoever he has to talk to. I said, yes, please, you know, the, I'm, I'm just telling you what's told to me. I just work here. And I'm supposed to tell you people not to do that stuff, you know? And then he sped off and he was pissed.
I haven't heard anything. Did you hear?
No, I haven't heard anything.
Nope.
Or you didn't?
Nope.
Probably ended up off the Alfred Road.
That's where I'm.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's the problem too, so.
Of course it is.
You, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place with all this, all this stuff.
Another creek road, which is another down south creek road.
Yes, mattresses, you know, there's everything everywhere. But how, how do we stop that? I don't know.
Well, it's not as bad as it used to be, but.
We used to be able to get into the bags and find a, an address.
Oh, yeah.
We did that up on, uh, Furlane Road.
Furlane Road.
That and, uh, Dave Potter's Land, we found some.
Yeah.
I have an older person that dumped it.
Mr. Chairman, looking at, uh, Horst's list, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve Katie, um, to order all the signage that's mentioned on this sheet.
And what?
And I'd like to also add to that motion that we add to our next budget time in November, the discussion about a heat pump and, um, the upgrades to the windows and doors, because we'll have to put that in budget for next year.
Yep.
Um, and I missed one thing at the beginning. I'd also like to authorize the town credit card to be used to go purchase the LED lights for inside.
The lights are what again?
LED light strips for inside.
Oh, yeah.
Three or four.
There's two of them. And, uh, I have one more. I don't know if you read that one. Uh, you know, a sign for the punch cards.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I'm motioning for all the signage.
All of them, okay.
All the signage to be approved.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I have, sure, me. I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Um, I just want to make sure I got everything. So, uh, Robert Ocean to have Katie order a little signage listed on the sheet, add to our next budget discussion at budget time, the heat pumps, windows, doors, and authorize town credit card use for the purchase of lighting.
Now, I have one more question.
Let, let's act on this first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Very Horst, but with.
Now, uh, talking with Cash, oh, yeah, uh, the electronics room, the, the garage door. Cash did come and they kicked it out, you know, and we can close it better. But we've come a couple of times since to work and the door's open. And all you have to do is step on the bottom and it opens up. So, and then there was some critter that came by and we had a big bag of wool, you know, from sheeping, shearing the sheep.
Sheep, yeah.
And, uh, it was all crud and, you know, ripped apart. And the door was, uh, the garage door was open. So, uh, you know, we should try to, especially where we're keeping the food scraps in there, you know? We don't want to come and then there's gonna be all over the place again.
Is there enough money in that budget to order ski door to do an update? Just to do a tune-up?
You can get a padlock thing and just put it on that door.
Do that.
Yeah, it would cost you ten bucks at Home Depot for something for a padlock and you can lock it and nobody's gonna open it.
Yeah, that's true. The side hasp.
Yeah.
That'll hold it closed.
Yeah.
It's what we use at the fairgrounds.
Yeah, okay. But.
Yeah.
Well, I'm amazed as long as the.
I'll make a motion that we authorize.
Only gets in.
Make a motion, we authorize padlock and, uh, side hasp to be purchased for the garage door.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Yes.
You don't necessarily have to have a padlock. You just have one of those twist.
Well, the handle that you open, you know, it's all funky. That can't do anything. You'd have to put a lock on the side or something, you know, with a padlock.
All right.
The padlock makes it easy to do. I mean, you gotta remember the combination of the key or whatever, but.
Key, yeah.
It gives you a solid lock or a solid hitch.
Right, yeah.
All right, so the motion and seconded, we've had conversation.
Yeah.
Any more conversation?
I have one more.
Well, let's.
Let's deal with this one.
Yes.
For this, I thought we were all done.
No.
No.
I'm moved to this.
All those in favor of the motion for the lock, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Looks like we got that one locked in.
Very Horst, do you have anything else?
Okay, one more.
Okay, we're ready.
You know, or you have any better idea for the brush pile? You know, how to.
Oh, boy.
Try to stop them.
Well, I think, let's see if the sign slows them down.
If it were.
If it slows them down or not. And then if not, we're gonna have to have a bigger discussion.
Okay.
I think that's gonna have to be what we're gonna have to do.
You have, uh, when, um, it used to be they used to just drive straight in, back their truck around and dump. Now you have to go around, right?
Yes, because I, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, um, I think that if you guys, the attendants over there, I know that you get busy sometimes and you can't pay attention to all of this stuff. But, uh, maybe if we had a, like a stop sign or something or where anybody coming in and going in that roundabout direction here, sign that would say, stop here, check in with the attendant.
Now, that's what we authorized, we ordered tonight.
All right, so let's see where that goes.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, anything else?
Perfect, no?
Okay, thank you, Horst.
Thank you.
Uh, Heidi.
As you know, we are rounding out into the last week of the fiscal year. I provided you with an updated budget status as to where we're at right now. I am working with Cash to get that invoice for the eighty thousand dollar deposit for leaving in. Um, by the end of this week, I will be running one final check run on Thursday. By the end of this week, I will be running one final check run on Thursday for accounts payable for any straggler invoices that are coming in. All departments have to be notified so that they know to get all their invoices to me ASAP. Overall, we're in really good shape. As you can see, we look to reduce the fund balance this year, and we're struggling to do so because our delinquent tax intake on the revenue side has done well, so.
So overall, what's your assessment overall?
Overall, we're doing really well.
Okay, that's good, taxpayers want to hear that. So turn the volume up. Katie, do you have anything?
Uh, just a couple of things, we did receive the final Tier Road survey today, it was filed with the town. So I think our next step is to have the roses back down to discuss possible project on Tier Road, which will be a discussion. Cash is wild. So I didn't know if you want that for your next meeting or the following one?
I thought we were still awaiting some feedback from the state on that project.
Um, as to what to do, or?
Yeah, I thought we were still awaiting stuff from them.
Um, Cash and I and Art had met with Stephanie from the RRC, Cash has met with V-Trans on possible solutions.
Okay.
So.
Do we have anything in writing from those folks?
Um, basically just our, the best management practices outlined by MRGP and Better Roads.
So nobody will put, so the translation is nobody will put anything in writing for us?
Right.
Of course not.
You can work within your right of way, that's like in writing, I suppose.
Yeah, okay, who wants to walk into that with a bulletproof vest on?
I'll also.
We're gonna need Sergeant Cross down here for that one.
I suspect you're right.
That's, I'll leave that up to you all, the other part of that was, we received our Better Roads grant agreement, which that portion of grant money was allocated towards Tier Road and cannot be moved to a different location. But it, the grant won't run out till September thirtieth of next year. We also have grant money through Grants and Aid that runs out September thirtieth of this year, but that can be moved around.
If we don't have a plan on select board level, we don't have a plan, what we're gonna do on that road is not really worth having people come down to have a discussion, however.
There needs to be something ironclad, in writing, on the table that can be discussed, because otherwise you're creating problems for no reason.
You'll be spinning your wheels for that.
That's right, you're gonna sit here and you're just gonna spin your wheels. And preferably, it's gonna be something that's signed off by, if it's RRC or if it's signed off by, like, somebody.
So would a pre-construction site summary be something sufficient, are you thinking?
No, because a pre-summary site summary doesn't tell you, it doesn't list the work.
It's supposed to tell you what you're gonna do.
Yeah.
But, I mean, there should be drawings, there should, I mean, they're gonna have to have everything.
But the select board doesn't know what they want to do there now. We don't.
I think we gotta do some homework before we call anybody in with the road commissioner, and I think it's a conversation we can't really have tonight without him here.
I agree.
So what are next steps?
I would say you're gonna need a, whether it's a workshop before a meeting so that we, because we, again, we gotta have our ducks in a row before we can do anything to go out to residents or to go out wherever.
Yeah, no, and I totally agree, I think that if we, within the next month, say, let's get together and have a.
Sure, and if the money doesn't run out, and I know, I know this goes against the grain because I've sat on this board for a long time and it always seems like it's pedal to the metal to get everything done as fast as possible. If this grant money doesn't run out until September of next year, there's no reason we can't take our time and really have our ducks in a row before we step into something. Because sometimes slow and steady is gonna be a lot better than tearing the Band-Aid off, so.
I mean, in view of the tension from the neighborhood folks, I think you're a hundred percent right.
And right now, the neighborhood folks, I've been getting phone calls.
I'm sure you have.
And they're very satisfied.
Oh, that's good.
With the fact that the work that Cash did temporarily up above, he rebraded little bits and all this stuff, but the water is not coming down like it has been. And the last call I got was from Pat Lambert the other day, and she was very happy and she wanted me to pass on to Cash and the road crew that the last couple of times when we had a heavier rain.
Yep.
There was no issue.
Well, that's good, so.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
I guess the other question with then, do you want to execute that grant at your next meeting? It was recommended by V-Trans to at least get it claimed.
How long do we have until it has to be claimed?
I'm not sure.
Well, let's put it on the agenda for that, and within the next two weeks, see if we can get the majority of the board in a workshop.
Would it be helpful to invite, like, Alan May to that workshop or Stephanie from RRC, who have a pretty good understanding of the permit?
Sure.
Good, but.
Because I, from my understanding is, like, they're saying you have your survey filed, you kind of, you know your right of ways now, it's your town road, here are the guidelines for best management practices, go and do that, so.
But the workshop is just going to be for the select board to make a decision as to what the process is gonna be for retrofitting that road, upgrading it, whatever term you want to use.
Because whatever decide, whatever decision gets made on how the water issue's going to be addressed to meet spec, right, I mean, we have to meet, we have to meet the spec of what MRGP requires. The reality is, it's very easy for a group outside of town to say, oh, you know your right of way, now go do it. Like, that, there's.
Well, so there has been some possible solutions passed around to help with that, that Cash and Alan have discussed. So I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, so that needs to come to this board.
Right.
If that's going on, yeah. So that we're kept in the loop as to what those possible solutions might be. Because I haven't heard of any, so.
Okay, so yes to those two individuals attending a workshop, setting up a workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, so our board that's present here tonight, you have to understand that at some point, we're gonna have to try and make the decision on a date, sir.
Oh, sure, no, I, I agree, but what I'm just saying, and if, if other members of the board disagree, that's fine, and I'm more than happy to hear disagreement, but what I would say is, I don't think we are in a position to call the residents in here and have a discussion yet, because we don't even have hard and fast information to present to the residents. So that's, that's putting the cart before the horse. There's, there's not gonna be a solution that can be presented.
No, I totally agree, and that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Well, let's get this workshop going and do it.
All right, so let's, we'll look at the calendar there tomorrow, Katie, and get a couple of suggestions real quick, which days majority of us can be there, and these individuals, or when we come up with a date, then we'll send some information to these individuals that, you know, can give us some advice on this. Sound good?
The only thing I will say is, just don't schedule something prior to the road commissioner and that group having something to present to us. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Like, there's, there's no point in coming down here and sitting in a workshop if there's nothing really to present to us. Because we all have, no offense, more important things to do with our time. So if, if it's not, if it's not ready to go, the road commissioner and, and if it's RRC or whatever, there's gotta be things ready to go that we can look at, because otherwise it's a waste of time for everyone.
Well, that's what, I mean, the important part is that Cash isn't here tonight.
Yeah.
And we're not, no, he knows, I mean, he works that.
Sure, oh, yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. So I would highly recommend the first conversation is to have with Cash, and is there something that can be presented to the board as to what the plan potentially is? Or you, you mentioned that there's a couple of options on the table, are there two options that are on paper that can be presented to the board that the board can give input and decide on?
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk to Cash and see if he can make a drawing out or whatever.
Kevin, do you have anything, cemetery-wise?
I had a good day Saturday despite the rain, several members of the community came out, several Volca members came up. Targeted some heavy stones I wanted to get up because it's generally heavier than just one or two people can deal with, and all but one were gotten up, so got some touch-up work to do on them. Women of the Clarendon Historical Society baked a whole bunch of cookies for the dessert, so that worked out good, so helpful for them. Members of the Civil Air Patrol came out.
Cool.
A youth group from Mill River was represented, so then other various people, some people I knew, some people I didn't know, who just saw the, you know, we were gonna be there and came, and everybody worked until it just got, just too muddy.
Looked like there was probably around twenty people there.
We had about twenty-five, twenty-eight people.
Yeah.
Fire department brought the pumper out there, so we had water, so that worked out.
Guys did a good job. All right, Art, do you have any concerns?
No.
Rob?
I don't have anything tonight.
Me either. George?
Oh, I've got five or six items, take us about an hour, I think. Two items, item number one is that we had a meeting here Thursday, and I think Katie's sending out minutes from that meeting with the folks from North Futterline Road, they're concerned with the portion of the road that's in Rutland Town, and that meeting, we established that we've been invited to come and talk with Rutland Town. Highway Department, I guess, is where we're gonna meet with on the twentieth of July at six o'clock. And so we talked about the facts and the suggestions that we were gonna present to the Rutland Town folks. And, you know, we have to approach it as we're trying to hope that they're gonna be good neighbors and do something in terms of minimum kind of maintenance to that road so that it's passable most of the time, I guess, I don't know how else to say that. We certainly aren't gonna ask them to put it in the condition that the Clarendon, Clarendon portion of the road is in. I mean, that's almost like a highway these days, it's, I don't know how many people are up there, but it's really done well. So, that's that item, any questions, I'm happy to answer. The other item is just a reminder that we still have the incorrect, may have the incorrect ownership on a parcel of land over there by the schoolhouse of own, being owned by the town. And just a reminder that maybe we ought to think about what we should do about that. I'm done.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Any further conversation?
Can I?
Yes.
I just want, thought about this, the zero sort is down again, totally. I've called last week, two or three times, this week, I've, well, last week and the following Saturday, that's when it started acting up. They had just repaired it maybe a week, week before that. And now I've called and called and called, and they were supposed, the engineer or, you know, maintenance, the head of maintenance, yes, oh, he's in a meeting, and then, oh, we didn't know, I just called today, he was supposed to call me back, he never did either. So I told him to bring another, you know, box, and hopefully, it's not gonna be a giant one, nobody can get anything in. And, you know, it was three, three weeks the last time, and we had it for about a week, week and a half repaired, and everybody was happy, and now it's down again, and I've tried and tried and tried to get, you know. I left messages, you know, I did everything I could, and they, the fellow said today, oh, we're coming to pick up the zero sort container. He said, you called? I said, no. I said, the zero sort is broken, it does not work. And he says, oh, oh, well, it was put down wrong. I mean, it has been put down wrong, you know, for a week and a half now. And, you know, it just, Saturday it just totally stopped, so now it's.
I'd make a recommendation that the treasurer maybe exercise some of her former contacts and see if she can find out what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to do that.
And, and let's get that tomorrow.
And don't let them bring one of those big.
I know.
Dumpsters again. Don't let them drop it off, because that, somebody's gonna.
I'll be there.
Somebody's gonna get hurt going up and down that stupid ladder.
They're doing it today, probably.
That was ridiculous.
Oh, yeah, and we can't, you know, Harry can't do it, David, you know, he, you know.
Nobody should be going up and down the ladder.
You know, I was sore like a son of a gun, you know, the first day, you know, the people that can't throw it in there. And, you know, it's just not right for them to do that to us.
Let's, because that's open tomorrow, Heidi, so let's, as soon as you can, give somebody a call, and then also. Yeah, and also the other thing is, emphasize, don't send a.
I am, I'm writing a note.
Oh, okay.
And have, if they do send it, Heidi.
You just let me know, I'll take care of it.
But when they bring one, I told them to face it towards the driveway so we can open it up and at least we can, you know, walk in and dump some in there until it gets to a certain point where we can close it. And then, but I don't think we should use ladders, our ladders, that's lawsuit waiting to happen.
Yeah.
You know?
I wouldn't even have put a ladder there.
I know.
Open it up on the other side, let people walk around to go in there, do not put a ladder there.
Tell them we can't have that due to liability.
Yeah.
Right.
Do not put a ladder there.
All right, there's a motion made, seconded. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Anyone opposed?